Good morning. It is nine AM and I will call to order the February, I mean, the March ninth meeting of the Salina County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
And for the first time in quite a while, will we please stand for the flag salute and then remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. At this time, citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. And please state your name and address.
Yes, good morning Chairman Sparks and members of the Salina County Commission. My name is Stephen Howe and I reside at twenty-two zero-two Melrose Lane here in Salina. On January eleventh of this year, I was sworn in to serve as State Representative for Kansas House District seventy-one. I currently serve on three committees, federal and state affairs, transportation, and insurance and pensions. The Kansas Legislature is currently at its midpoint of the session. It's kind of hard to believe, but last week we just completed what is known as turnaround week. It's the last week in which non-exempt bills have to pass out of their house of origin. So last week, we passed sixty-three bills and those now go over to the Senate or to a conference committee for further consideration. My main purpose for being here is to formally introduce myself and let you know that it is my desire to work with you, the county government, county government staff, our city, city commissioners, and local school districts. Together, we can help make Salina and Salina County a better place to work, operate a business, or perhaps even retire. As a state representative, it is important for me to have citizen input, especially as policy is being considered in the legislature. The best way to contact me is by email, which is stephen.how@house.k s.gov. My office phone in Topeka is seven-eight-five-two-nine-six-seven-six-four-two. I'll be heading back to Topeka tomorrow. We're adjourned until tomorrow morning, but I'll be heading back tomorrow. I'll leave my contact information with the county clerk. That way she can disseminate it to any department folks here at the county level, but look forward to working with you in the weeks and months ahead. Please do not assume I know everything that's going on. Certainly, a lot of issues at hand and the Kansas Association of Counties is very good about meeting with me and other legislators, but there could be more of a Salina County angle on a particular issue. So feel free to stay in contact and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Okay, same. And thank you for bringing it to our attention, Mr. Howe. And I apologize. One of the other things is, is that since we're, and I'm kind of out of mix here, and since we're here live today and then we're still on a Zoom, I forgot to mention that everyone could make sure that all their microphones, phones, and other electronic devices are muted when not speaking, so the remote observers can hear the proceedings clearly. I would appreciate it now if Brad, IT Director, could instruct everyone on how to raise their hand in the meeting.
Good morning. Assuming everyone in the Zoom meeting is running the Zoom client, if you select the participants icon at the bottom of the screen, it will reveal a raise hand function within the meeting. If you select raise hand, that will let the host know that you'd like to speak. Thanks.
Thank you. Has anyone else like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda. Are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete from the agendas printed? Seeing none, at this time approve the consent agenda as presented, approval of prior minutes, tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, and public forum agenda as presented. Hearing no objection, the consent agenda will be approved. Next in line, we'll just go to move into the action items. Presentations, I'm sorry. Excuse me, and I'm reading this. This is how good this is going. Presentations.
Item number one, county award for low loss ratio with Jess Fannin Steel from K-Work.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Jess Fannin Steel and I'm with K-Work. I'm the Marketing Director and a Loss Prevention Specialist with them. Every year, we deliver awards to the counties that have the lowest loss ratios, and so this means that you're doing a great job. And we have three different tiers and we base it off the premium. So zero to fifty thousand dollars premium, we have one, two, three, fifty thousand through a hundred and twenty-five, we have one, two, three, and then above that. And I'm just pleased to award that you guys obtained second place for that. I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fannin Steel.
I just want to talk real quick about some of the services that we have, if you're not aware of, and of course, these are all free of charge. We do provide defensive driving free of charge. I'm sure that you've taken advantage of that. That's every two years. And we also do flagger training for the road and bridge, and then we also will do forklift training, which is PIT training, powered industrial truck, just a big word for that. You can always call the office if you have any other questions, but you know, we are the work comp provider for the county and just wanted to present that award to you. Do you guys have any questions for me or have any comments or?
Well, at this time, I just want to think that county employees for everybody else have really working hard to accommodate and prove that we can work without a lot of accidents and everything else. So very, very safety-driven. I know that most departments, especially Mr. Road and Bridge.
Yeah, and that's.
And the Sheriff's Department.
And fortunately, those two places are where most of the work come from, because you know, you're working heavy equipment and you know, you're dealing with some other people, so.
And from anybody in Salina County, Mr. Fannin Steel, thank you for the award.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. We'll move on to action items.
RFA one thirty-one dash twenty-one, Mack engine replacement with Darren Fischel, Road and Bridge Administrator.
Good morning, Commissioners.
This RFA is to authorize the engine and transmission replacement of one of our semi-tractor equipment hauling units. The truck is a two thousand and four purchased in twenty-eleven. The vehicle currently has three hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine miles. We believe it is for the best interest of the department and taxpayers to replace the engine instead of a new truck purchase. This vehicle's in otherwise good condition. Replacing the motor, since it is prior to Tier Four emissions regulations, would make it so that we could continue to be serviced in-house by our mechanics. We received two quotes, one from MHC Kenworth of Salina, Kansas for thirty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and fourteen cents, one from Foley Equipment, Salina, Kansas, for fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-four cents. Alternatives for action are to accept the quotes from MHC Kenworth for the remanufactured engine and transmission installation, or accept the quote from Foley Equipment for a rebuilt engine and transmission. Staff recommends having the remanufactured engine and transmission work performed at MHC Kenworth of Salina, Kansas for the amount of thirty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and fourteen cents. Rebuilding the motor we currently have is ten thousand more than a remanufactured engine. Our department currently has two move tractors. This, along with the earlier purchase of a move trailer approved by the commission, will allow us more flexibility on mobilization and ensures that we have a backup move truck or trailer available. Right now, we have three crews and one of them is generally waiting for a move truck to free up. This will increase our response time for disasters and emergencies. The budget impact is this will be paid for with the cash reimbursement of fifty-one thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-five cents from the clean diesel grant awarded for the new excavator. The excavator has arrived. The old one has been disposed of and the documentation has been submitted to KDHE. The reimbursement amount will be fifty-one thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-five cents minus the rebuild, remanufactured price of thirty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and fourteen cents. This leaves a balance of eighteen thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-one cents that will be deposited into the special equipment fund. This will leave a balance of one million one hundred and three thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-five, eighty-seven cents, and the prudent reserve for this account is one million dollars.
Are there any questions or comments by Commissioners?
I have one question, Darren. The fifty-one thousand two ninety-six cash reimbursement, didn't we credit that amount already to the purchase of the other excavator? Wasn't that one of the selling points of getting the new excavator is that we would have this cash reimbursement, which would lower the cost of the excavator?
No, we had to, we had to fully pay for the excavator and then this is what they are going to reimburse us for that price.
Right, but when you made that presentation, maybe I'm wrong, but I believe you mentioned that there would be a reimbursement after we.
After we purchased, yes.
Right, and that was one of the selling points of buying the excavator?
Yes.
So to me, it seems like we're using that money in two different places. We're using it to sell the thought of buying a new excavator and then we're now saying we'll use that money to, to purchase a new engine.
Well, yes.
Thank you.
Darren, what's the difference between warranty in regards to remanufactured versus rebuilt?
The, the remanufactured engine is one that comes from Mack. The one that Foley's quoted would be a long block. They would, they would get the, they would have to take all the stuff off of our engine and put it on this long block. The remanufactured engine comes ready to just place into the frame.
So should be a quick turnaround time.
It should be. And that's also on the transmission. The transmission is a remanufactured transmission also.
And as far as the warranty difference?
Both the same, really, one year.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Member of the public that wish to speak on this? Okay, I'll bring it back to the Commission for more discussion or possible action.
Well, I'll at least get a vote on it. Mr. Chairman and I move we accept the quote from MHC Kenworth for a remanufactured engine and transmission installation as presented by staff. Second motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA one thirty-one dash twenty-one, Mack engine replacement. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for the vote. Commissioner White? Aye. Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Next item.
RFA one thirty-three dash twenty-one, right-of-way offers for Simpson Road Improvement Project with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good to see you again.
Yes, it's good to be here finally. So it's just not quite the same when you're, when I'm sitting fifteen minutes away, so. So Salina County Road and Bridge has programmed a road improvement project on Simpson Road between Magnolia Road and Crawford Street. The project includes the addition of a four-foot wide roadway shoulder and the construction of flatter ditch slopes. Okay, this work will require the acquisition of additional road right-of-way along the entire two-mile-long section of project. We are utilizing federal funds for the construction of the project, so we must follow a very strict procedure for obtaining the additional right-of-way. Every landowner along the project has been directly contacted by me in order to discuss the scope of the project and to explain the need for the additional right-of-way. Each landowner has also been provided a brochure titled, "Real Property Acquisition for Kansas Highways, Roads, Streets, and Bridges," and this brochure explains their rights as a landowner. The next step in the acquisition process is to have the Board of County Commissioners approve the offer for each right-of-way taking. So enclosed in your packet is a right-of-way summary cost table, which lists each parcel and a recommended offer for each type of property. All acquisitions, with the exception of the Pearl Weiss Trust property, is considered simple, uncomplicated, and less than ten thousand dollars. Therefore, Salina County staff is able to create an offer by evaluating current and comparable land sales in the area of the project. The right-of-way acquisition for the Pearl Weiss Trust parcel will be over ten thousand dollars, and therefore, KDOT requires an appraisal to establish the offer. The real estate appraisal services have been hired to perform this task, and it's really, the value is over ten thousand dollars just because of the size. The tract is the entire mile long, and so that's, that's why the value is over ten thousand dollars. So enclosed in your packet, you should have a right-of-way exhibit plan sheets that kind of gives some, you know, a visual for each right-of-way taking. The hatched areas are showing the new right-of-way. The crosshatch areas are showing areas of the temporary construction easements for the installation of new pipes under Simpson Road. I do have a couple pictures, you know, just along each side of the road, just to kind of show you what the property looks like. So Brad, if you could pull up the east side.
Thank you. Thank you, Darren. Next item.
RFA one thirty-three dash twenty-one, right-of-way offers for Simpson Road Improvement Project with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good to see you again.
Yes, it's good to be here finally. So it's just not quite the same when you're, when I'm sitting fifteen minutes away, so. So Salina County Road and Bridge has programmed a road improvement project on Simpson Road between Magnolia Road and Crawford Street. The project includes the addition of a four-foot wide roadway shoulder and the construction of flatter ditch slopes. Okay, this work will require the acquisition of additional road right-of-way along the entire two-mile-long section of project. We are utilizing federal funds for the construction of the project, so we must follow a very strict procedure for obtaining the additional right-of-way. Every landowner along the project has been directly contacted by me in order to discuss the scope of the project and to explain the need for the additional right-of-way. Each landowner has also been provided a brochure titled, "Real Property Acquisition for Kansas Highways, Roads, Streets, and Bridges," and this brochure explains their rights as a landowner. The next step in the acquisition process is to have the Board of County Commissioners approve the offer for each right-of-way taking. So enclosed in your packet is a right-of-way summary cost table, which lists each parcel and a recommended offer for each type of property. All acquisitions, with the exception of the Pearl Weiss Trust property, is considered simple, uncomplicated, and less than ten thousand dollars. Therefore, Salina County staff is able to create an offer by evaluating current and comparable land sales in the area of the project. The right-of-way acquisition for the Pearl Weiss Trust parcel will be over ten thousand dollars, and therefore, KDOT requires an appraisal to establish the offer. The real estate appraisal services have been hired to perform this task, and it's really, the value is over ten thousand dollars just because of the size. The tract is the entire mile long, and so that's, that's why the value is over ten thousand dollars. So enclosed in your packet, you should have a right-of-way exhibit plan sheets that kind of gives some, you know, a visual for each right-of-way taking. The hatched areas are showing the new right-of-way. The crosshatch areas are showing areas of the temporary construction easements for the installation of new pipes under Simpson Road. I do have a couple pictures, you know, just along each side of the road, just to kind of show you what the property looks like. So Brad, if you could pull up the east side. So this is going to be on the east side of the road. So starting, I'm, I'm standing at the intersection of Magnolia and Simpson, so I'm looking north. So the, the east side of the road there, that first tract of land is just a native grass tract. Next picture. Here, along, this is about the half-mile line north of Magnolia, where there is a fence line and this gate. It's, it's not being used right now. You know, the fence is in somewhat disrepair, but this is, there's some cost for the, to, in a sense, pay to have that, that gate and fence line removed. Next picture. Here's another picture of the, the fence line. You can see the, the wires kind of hanging down, so it's in a little bit of a disrepair, but, and this was, was something that the landowner was requesting to be, to have, have that paid for. Next picture. This is a little bit further to the north, really right across from the Rockwell residence. So you can see there's some volunteer trees that have to be removed, some fence lines that'll have to be removed, and then starting here going north, the cloud is where the power poles will have to be relocated further, further back as well. Next picture. This is north of Cloud, Cloud Street, and so you can see there's, you know, just some grassland, some bottom ground, and then a little bit further, further north, there you see some, there's a cultivated field. Next picture. Here again, this is just another picture of the right-of-way. There's a couple residences there where the, the trees are at. The new right-of-way will be just pretty close to the tree line there. Next picture. And here's at Crawford Street, looking south still on the east side of the road. You know, so this, this fence line through here is, there's, there's no wire, there's, you know, it's even more so disrepair. The power pole that you see right there from Evergy, that's going to be outside the right-of-way, so that won't have any issues with, with construction. Okay, so now if we could pull up the west side. So again, I'm starting at Magnolia, Magnolia and Simpson, looking north. So here's where we've got a, starting with a cultivated field. Next picture. So there's about the half-mile line. There's an Evergy power line crossing. The power pole is going to be outside the right-of-way, so there's no need to relocate that pole. The next picture. So here's a little bit further north of there. There's cultivated field on the, it's kind of hard to see. The weeds are kind of blocking it. And then there's the Rockwell residence, kind of in the background there. Next picture. So on the Rockwell residence, there's some landscaping that's going to have to be moved, and so part of the purchasing the right-of-way in front of this parcel is, requires some cost to have the, actually, the landowner relocate some of this right-of-way. Or I'm sorry, some of the landscaping. Next picture. Here's just another angle at it and the, the tree there is going to have to go. So the right-of-way is just going to be to the west, west of that tree. Next picture. And here's the other side of the driveway where there's just some bricks that'll have to be moved. Next picture. So here is, I'm just south of Cloud, so Cloud is still up ahead, so there's just more cultivated field on the west side. Next picture. Here's a little ways to the north. I jumped ahead of ways. So really, so I'm north of, north of Cloud, probably about the half-mile line to where on the west side, it's, it's all a cultivated field. The next picture. And here's at the intersection of Crawford. Okay, I think that's it. Alternatives for action is, one is to approve the right-of-way offers as shown in the summary table, table for all parcels. The Commission Chairman will need to sign an estimate of just compensation for each parcel, and that's required by the federal regulations. The second alternative would be to provide an alternate offer for each parcel. Staff recommends to approve the offers as shown in the enclosed right-of-way summary cost. Land type values are, what I did is for the grassland, I'm offering three thousand dollars per acre. Again, I looked up twenty-twenty land sales and got a price range for that, and just due to the small individual acreage of, of each parcel, I'm using the high end of that, and so that's where I came up with the three thousand dollars per acre. For the cultivated dry land, I've got six thousand six hundred dollars per acre. So for those, you know, that farm think that's pretty high, but in November of twenty-twenty, a parcel located actually on the project was purchased for this value. After talking with the landowner, the property is valued at this price due to the close proximity to Salina, its ability to be developed, and its dislocation on an asphalt surface road. The, for the residential land, the, the offer I came up with, I just used the county appraised value, and so they just took that total value divided by the acreage, and then that's what was my unit price for that. And the temporary construction easements at six hundred dollars per acre, and this is typically about twenty percent of the land value, and so that's how I came up with my unit values. The budget impact, total cost for all the offers, with the exception of the Pearl Weiss Trust property, as recommended by staff, is twenty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. Funds for these, this cost will come out of the one twenty-four account for special road construction. And the offer for the Pearl Weiss Trust property will be presented at a later date when I get the report back from the appraiser. No questions?
Justin, this is Commissioner Vidrickson. If we're widening the road in terms of feet, we're widening it two feet on each side. Is that correct?
The, the shoulder is actually going to be four feet wide, so I'm not going to, we're not really widening the asphalt section at all. What we're, we're adding a four-foot gravel shoulder, and then all the ditches are going to be regraded with a flatter slope. So everything kind of moves out quite a bit.
Okay, but I'm, I'm still at a loss as to why we need more land then. If we're really not, I don't understand the widening process. How, how far from the edge of the asphalt to the property line is, are the right-of-ways now?
It, it varies all the way through there. So if you, if you look at the, and I don't have that in front of me, the, the plan sheets that I gave you, some places it's thirty-five feet, you know, from the section line, which is pretty close to the center of the road. There's areas where it's forty feet. There's areas where it's fifty-five feet. It, it really varies all the way across there. So, and you got to think of why the additional right-of-way is, well, let me, let me back up. So first, the federal funds that we're using for this project are high-risk rural road safety funds. Okay, so they're safety funds, and so there's very strict design requirements that I must follow, and that's, you know, most of that's based off of traffic count. With the traffic count that this road has, it requires a minimum shoulder width and a minimum, what we call a four-slope, four-slope, which is the slope from the ditch to the bottom of, or from the shoulder to the bottom of the ditch. And that requires a four-to-one slope, which means that every four foot horizontally you come out, you got to drop one foot. And that's quite a bit flatter than what's out there now. Then the, the, what we call the construction limits, which is the very edge of the construction as you're going along the road, kind of where your, your ditch ties into your natural ground line, that, that width from the edge of the road is going to vary depending on your depth from your top of your road to your bottom of your ditch. So the deeper that elevation difference is, the wider everything goes out. And so that's really the need for the, the additional right-of-way.
Well, I'm splitting hairs here. I'm certain, when, when I look at a total cost here of twenty-five thousand dollars for this two-mile project, plus the Pearl Weiss Trust property, but, but still, it just leaves me shaking my head a little bit. And it appeared to me in the, in the pictures that you presented that some And it appeared to me in, in the pictures that you, uh, presented, that, uh, some of the driveway, uh, landscaping was on the right of way as it is. So why are we having to?
There's some of it, the majority, because that's a section where it's pretty, the right of way is pretty narrow through there. Um, the right of way, I believe, is at 35 feet. And so, yeah, there's a little bit that's in the right of way, but the, the greatest majority of it is going to be in that additional right of way. Because I'm going to, I'm, I need to obtain an additional 20 feet through there. Uh, so that's where the majority of, and all the flowers, there's a little bit of brick and, and maybe some rock that's in the existing right of way. Um, but that's where, where, um, you know, the offer was just to, to move it all.
Let me play the devil's advocate right quick, then, what happens if, uh, a landowner or multiple landowners just say, that's not enough money, I don't, I don't like that offer? What happens?
So, okay, so this is, um, so with the federal funds, this is a, if, there's a very strict process that we have to, uh, follow. So I have to, and that, well, Celine County has to justify our just compensation. That's the form that Roger will, will have to sign, it's called, you know, estimate of just compensation for the value of the property, and I have to justify that. If we present the offer and there's landowners that, um, would like to counteroffer, that's acceptable, there's, there's a process for that, it's called administrative settlement. But they have to show, you know, they have to prove that there's value and assets on the land that we're not accounting for. If they can prove that, then I will, uh, take a look at that, um, and I will create a, and if I agree with it, I will create a administrative settlement, again, for approval by the commissioners. If they just would like to have more money, and without really any other justification, then we can't accept that. Then there's a whole new process, you know, and if we can't come to an agreement of some sort, uh, because everything's got to be justified, you know, it, it would, the next step would be, uh, condemnation proceedings.
I'll be very surprised if this $25,000 figure, uh, remains at 25,000, I can tell you that. Uh, my other question would be, are, are there a time stipulation involved with the federal government and the grant that they're giving you on this project to get the project completed?
Yes, um, okay, so the, the time stipulation is really when the, the project plans need to be ready to go. Um, and this is, I think what they call a P S A N E S A middle to K dot, um, is July of '22. Okay, so, uh, but part of, we can't keep submitting plans if we haven't obtained the right of way. And we have to, and there's a certificate, um, that I have to fill out and submit to K dot when the right of way is done. And there's a, there's a deadline for that, and I don't know what that is, um, has in front of me, but there's also another certificate of utility adjustments, you know, all the utilities have to be moved, um, and there's a very specific date, I, off the top of my head, I, I don't have that. Um, but we have to certify that all the utilities are out of the way. You know, so there's, there's very strict deadlines on when this has to be done. Ultimately, though, if the plans aren't done, um, when they say the plans are done, then they're not going to bid, you know, they can't bid the project, because this is all going through K dot, um, and they'll, they'll either pull the funds or push, push the project back, you know, another year or two.
But the funds will still be available?
Maybe.
Okay, uh, well, don't, don't misread me that I'm in the way of this, because I, I know that the county has done a good job of widening the shoulders on many of our, uh, asphalt roads throughout the county, uh, that have severe drop-offs. And I know we've had multiple, uh, accidents, uh, either on Marymount Road or Rookville Road or wherever, uh, because of the drop-off from, on the roads to the ditch. So I'm in favor of the project, I'm just skeptical that this is going to get done, uh, the way that we want to do it.
As far as, uh, utilities, fiber optics, run that?
Four, two miles through there, I believe, and it's going to have to be relocated also?
Of course.
Okay.
There's always got to be something in the way. So, yeah, there's a fiber optic line, um, on the west side of the road that, that runs the entire length, um, that'll have to be relocated. There is, um, sections of power poles, um, that'll have to be relocated, because there's some sections of this project where there's already been additional right of way purchased out to that 55 feet, um, you know, for a, a small grading, and I think it was a box brace project for that. Um, so, but on both sides of that section, we're going to have to move some power poles. There's also some AT&T copper lines that'll have to be relocated, and then the big one is the, um, rural water districts. Uh, so there's Celine Rural Water Number Two. The south half mile, um, will have to be relocated, and that'll be at our expense, because it's, they have their own easement, it's outside the right of way. Um, and then we got lucky that, uh, if you noticed on the pictures, there's all those, uh, volunteer trees. So they had to swing the water line out full of the way from the road to go around the trees, and that's really, um, you know, saving us from having to relocate more, more of that water line. So there's also a, um, uh, a service line, um, going to one residence that'll have to be relocated as well, so. But the first step is, we can't really start moving utilities until we obtain the right of way for that.
And when you anticipate the Pearlwise parcel will be appraised and?
Correct, yeah, yeah, they went, um, the appraiser did a field visit, um, with a representative from the landowner, uh, yesterday. Uh, so they're, they're, they're working on that, so I'm hoping to have that in a couple weeks.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Vidrickson again, uh, so, from what I've just heard you say there, this $25,000, uh, in land acquisition, plus the, plus the wise situation, is a drop in the bucket compared to what we're really going to have to spend here for relocating fiber optics, water lines, et cetera. That, that looks to me like it's going to be a significant cost.
The, the fiber optic line is inside the existing right of way, so that's going to be on the cost of the, the, um, the company. The only utility that we're going to have to pay to have relocated is the water line.
Do you have an estimate on that in terms of, uh, per mile or per whatever, per foot yard, whatever?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's not a, it's, uh, so I'm, I'm working with, uh, I've, I've already met with, uh, the rural water district and kind of got their ideas and, and kind of get their, their involvement in this. Um, he's thinking that it'll be around 50,000.
For two miles?
No, for a half a mile of new water line, and then there is a, um, service line. Um, depending on how we go about it, the service line's going to, runs about a quarter mile, but it might be cheaper to bore underneath the road and, and tie in, um, in a lot shorter distance. So those are some of the details we're still, we're still kind of working out. And I'm, I've, I've, um, we're, there's a couple other lines that might be, um, very, very close to the construction limits, and so what I did, I'm, I'm talking with a utility company, um, or a contractor, uh, here in town to do some hydro excavation, to actually physically find the water line, to see if it needs to be relocated or not. I'm, I'm really hoping, and I think that we should be clear, but I need to be 100% sure.
So in other words, if, if we, uh, okay this land acquisition proposition that we've got going here, uh, there's actually going to be, uh, significant more dollars involved that we're actually okay in without knowing what they are, is that, am I reading that correctly?
Well, right now, you're, you're just okay in the, the right of way acquisition, uh, once the, the water line, once we get a final estimate from a contractor to move the water line, um, yeah, there'll be some costs there. But this is also a, um, $900,000 project, okay? That we're getting, with these federal funds, we're getting 90% of that $900,000 paid for with federal funds. You know, and so, you know, there's a lot of value in going through this process, um, you know, using these funds.
And, just, excuse me, but just a quick note on that, is that those grant monies are allocated, that it could be used for some of these product, projects here, like moving the water lines and all that, it has to be for the road?
Only construction, construction and construction engineering, that's it.
Okay, that's what I was just?
We hired a consultant to design the project, that's, that can't be paid for, right of way can't be paid for, um, and utilities. So there's some states that do allow that, um, Kansas has decided to not. And I think a lot of it is, they want the, um, local owners, whether it's the city or county, to have some skin in the game. You know, it's like, you know, you, you guys pay for the engineering, uh, utilities and right of way, and then leave the, the federal funds for construction.
Gotcha, thank you.
Justin, I, I know that this project was identified in your, uh, road improvements that you presented to us a couple times. And driving that road, I, I know it has heavily traveled, and you talk about getting it to a four to one slope. Wha- what is the steepest it's at now?
Oh, boy, there's, there's air, a lot of it is, um, a- and really, when you get north of Cloud Street, you know, it gets really steep. You know, some of there, you've got, you know, just a drop-off from your edge asphalt, you know, and then there's, it's a, like a two to one. Um, you know, in some places, it's, it's even steeper than that. Um, so with a four to one, what we, what, uh, we call that, I mean, my industry, is it is, uh, traversable and recoverable. So it means that if you get out on that slope, if an air vehicle gets on a four to one slope, you can traverse it, which means that you can, you know, you won't roll over, and you can recover and get back up on the road. Anything steeper than a thr, uh, the four to one slope, like a three to one slope, it's traversable and non-recoverable. So if you get on a three to one slope, you know, you shouldn't roll, but you also can't just travel up onto the road, you've got to come to a complete stop and then try to get up on the road there too. So with, um, Simpson Road of, of, you know, pushing 2,000 vehicles a day, they require at a minimum, uh, that four to one, four to one slope.
And, and I know, I'm sure the sheriff can attest to this, there have been numerous roll-offs of, of Simpson Road. It is a, a very dangerous road, and it falls well within our road improvement, uh, mentality, so, um, I, I applaud you for identifying it, and hopefully we can go on with the project.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the right of way offers as shown.
I second the motion.
Are there any further comments? If not, I'll call for a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you, thank you, just.
Next item?
RFA, excuse me, 134 dash 21, aid to local grants application with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning. Mr. Tiller.
So before you, you have the annual application signature page for our aid to local grants through KDHE. This page, which needs to be signed by the commission chairman and myself, will be submitted digitally to KDHE through their, uh, Kansas Grant Management System, uh, with the full program applications by Monday, March 15th. Um, you will receive, or we will receive contracts that will be brought before the commission, uh, later on in the summer, and where you will make the final approval to accept the funds. Uh, the la, aid to local grants run for July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. Um, the COVID-19 ELC expanding if it structure is a separate grant, uh, to support COVID functions, but KDHE had it on the signature page, which is why it, uh, it's on here. Um, and it'll support COVID-specific staffing as necessary until July 2023. Um, alternatives for action are to approve and sign the signature page or send staff back for more information. Uh, we recommend, uh, signing the signature page that we can submit our applications, um, as these grants provide for staff and services as part of our, uh, health department programs. Um, and the expenses are budgeted for, and our budget for these, um, uh, expenses related to personnel and program, and then the grants either supplement or offset, uh, many of those expenses.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions by the commissioners?
I, I just want to, uh, thank you for, uh, shake, uh, shaking the trees, finding all these, uh, grant dollars where tax dollars paid by our, our county come back into the county and, uh, help, uh, with the public health inside the county.
Yes, sir.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept by signature the KDHE aid to local grants.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 134 dash 21, aid to local grants application. Are there any further comments? I'll call for the vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next item?
Item number four, Amendment Two to Resolution 20 dash 2308, Public Building Commission Member Appointment with Hannah Stanbaugh, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning, Hannah.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, in front of you is an amendment to Resolution 20 dash 2308. This is the resolution where we have, the county commission appointed members to the established Public Building Commission that was done back in September of last year. And since then, um, each of the commissioners, uh, appointed a member to the Public Building Commission. And on February 8th, we were notified that one of those members resigned his position on the Public Building Commission. Um, so this particular, um, amendment to the resolution is to appoint a member by the name of Pam Smith, um, to fill that fifth position on the Public Building Commission.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments by commissioners? Any members of the public who wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Amendment Number Two to Resolution 20 dash 2308.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second that we, uh, approve Amendment Number Two, Resolution 20 dash 2308, Public Building Commission Member Appointment. Are there any further comments?
Uh, this is Commissioner Vidrickson, uh, shouldn't we discuss who we're appointing? Or who, who resigned, or whatever?
Commissioner Vidrickson, maybe to, um, provide a, a little bit of history, so with the establishment of the Public Building Commission, each one of the members of the county commission, uh, selected an appointment to represent on the Public Building Commission. The, uh, member of the Public Building Commission that resigned their position was Commissioner White's appointment. Um, so I believe this, uh, this amendment to the resolution then is now replacing Commissioner White's, uh, former member that resigned and to replace it with Pam Smith.
So Commissioner White has, has appointed this, or this, uh, Pam White to be the, that's, that's the person that we're approving?
That would be correct, so this would be Commissioner White's appointment to the Public Building Commission.
And that would be a Pam Smith? Yes. So. It has been moved and seconded and voted on, and the motion passes five to zero. Oh, no?
You didn't vote.
Oh, we didn't vote yet, okay, excuse me. All right, uh, since there was another, uh, comment, uh, I'll call for a vote now.
Well, Commissioner, uh, Chair, Mr. Chairman, if I might, uh, do, do we, when, when these, uh, Hannah, this is your, a question for you, uh, when, when are these, uh, it says, whereas three commissioners appointed to the Celine County Building Commission, uh, do we reappoint others as, as time moves on? Or what's the, what's the timeframe on that?
That's a really good question, and so the appointments to the Public Building Commission, as made by the Board of County Commissioners, their terms coincide with the county commissioner that appointed them to the Public Building Commission.
Okay, all right, that'll, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other further comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner White? Seeing then I'll call for the vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Next item.
Item number five, RFA one thirty-two dash twenty-one, amendment two to resolution fifteen dash two one seven eight, bylaws for crime reduction committee with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Mr. Administrator.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So we are all about amendment number twos this morning. So this particular one is to, uh, basically morph the committee that used to be the jail reduction committee into a crime reduction committee. This really stemmed out of the conversation that your commission had at the time that you did your annual reorganization meeting and Commissioner Shadwick raised the issue of whether to continue the work of this particular committee. You discussed this, uh, item about a month ago and asked Commissioner Shadwick to meet with staff to make recommendations. So that has occurred and we now are presenting some, uh, revised bylaws for the commission's consideration. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't know if Commissioner Shadwick would like to weigh in or, um, I believe Andy Grievous is also on the phone.
Okay. Any comments? Any questions?
Uh, this is Commissioner Vidrickson and, and I'm just, uh, the city of Salina has just appointed a, uh, I, I'm not even sure what the, what the committee is called. Would there, would there be any need or thought to, uh, to putting these two, uh, groups together? Or, or do we not want to do that? I'm, I'm just wondering where it's headed.
And, uh, good question because I, I, I'm not aware of that. And, uh, are there any, any people on this committee that are on that committee that we know of?
I'm not sure exactly which committee the commissioners referring to. The only thing that I know that's been recently in the news about the city of Salina is, um, with regard to their, law enforcement oversight type of thing, which is not the purpose of this. This is really focused on, um, you know, trying to prevent recidivism into the criminal justice system as a whole, um, not really focused on the actions of, of, of law enforcement at all. Um, we would be seeking new appointments to this. If, if, if the commission approves this amendment today, um, we would be taking, um, new applications. We think that we, um, have identified a couple of people that are, are potentially interested in serving on it. There may be some folks from the old, um, committee who continue to be interested as well. Um, but the plan would be to take those applications and then, um, come back to the commission in a study session to review the expression of interest forms and, and then make appointments after that.
Commissioner Vidrickson, uh, those comments, uh, have clarified the, the situation for me. Thank you, Phil.
Certainly.
And are there any comments from the sheriff or, uh, community corrections? Or, I mean, Andy Grievous on their input on this? Any input?
Mr. Chairman, I, I have firstly, uh, success that the, uh, jail reduction committee had, I think, speak for themselves. Uh, a lot of the programs that they instituted have, have been working and I think we need to have some vehicle in place that continues, um, going down that road and trying to, to, uh, reduce, uh, jail population. And by doing that, uh, by redoing, uh, by reducing criminal behavior is going to reduce that. So I, I, uh, after reading this, I, I like, I like what's written here. I think it serves a purpose. Uh, I think that the past committee served, uh, a great service to the county and I'd like to see it go forward.
Any other comments by the commissioners? Any other comments by the public? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt amendment number two to resolution fifteen twenty-one seventy-five.
I second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA one thirty-five dash twenty-one. No, excuse me, RFA one thirty-two dash twenty-one amendment to number two, resolution fifteen dash twenty-one seventy-eight, bylaws for crime reduction committee. Any other further comments? If not, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank Commissioner Shadwick for getting with staff and Phil's input and, uh, getting this put together.
Yes.
It sure sounds great and best of luck with it.
Thank you. Commissioner White. Move on to the next item.
RFA one thirty-five dash twenty-one schematic design for new jail and sheriff's office with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Well, Mr. Philip.
Good, good morning again. I guess there's not a whole lot to say other than here's Jeff. Jeff Lane of Trainer HL is, uh, going to be presenting drawings and schedule information to your commission this morning regarding, uh, the schematic design for the new jail and sheriff's office. And I could bore you with history, but I think everybody's kind of up to speed. So Jeff?
Thanks, Phil. Uh, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. I know I was here two weeks ago and, you know, I shared with Phil and the commissioner that maybe one of these days I won't come back up here and, and have to present some information to you. But I do want to tell you, this is a milestone in the project. Um, as November third was a milestone, this is a milestone as well. We've reached schematic design and so that, that's a big, big deal for this project. Uh, that means we're continuing to move forward. Uh, we have a project that's on a site. We have a plan that works and functions uh, that I'm going to walk through a little bit today as we've talked with the sheriff and other stakeholders. And we have an exterior design that really starts to, to feed the need as it relates to the civic design for this community. So with that being said, I'll walk through this and, um, what I'd like to do is spend a little bit of time just kinda going through schematic design and where we've been and, and where we're going. And then we'll, uh, finish up with, uh, schedule and then we'll offer up any questions that you may have. Next slide, please. So early on, um, when we first began back in, uh, uh, end of November, first part of December, we went back through our goals and priorities for this project. Uh, we set those early on as it related to the referendum. But we wanted to circle back as a team. And so this is just a short list here of some of those goals that we had and making sure that we're still doing the right things as it relates to the project. And these are the goals and priorities that many times when we meet, we circle back to make sure that we're meeting. Um, so that the design at the end of the day is a success. Um, so we still are tracking and, uh, understanding the spending of the dollars on the right things. We're not trying to spend dollars that, that, uh, uh, on, on things that are not of value to the project or to the community. Uh, we still are talking about safety and security and addressing mental health issues within the jail. And then although we still are talking about understanding the existing conditions of the current facility, the only reason we talk about that and we talk about the, uh, ongoing maintenance that that facility has is to make sure that as we design this facility, we look at those items to, um, incorporate any of those, uh, insufficient pieces of your current facility in the design so that it's better at the end of the day. Next slide. Part of the other piece that the sheriff and, and the other stakeholders talked about is staff morale and retention. We want to make sure at the end of the day that we're not just doing the, um, right things and adding the value as it relates to the in custody and doing the programs, but also the staff that come to work here every day. Um, so we have done those things. We'll talk a little bit about what those are. We also talk about efficient staff modeling. So we want to make sure that at the end of the day, we're not providing a facility that, uh, overstaffs or has to create staff, um, in an inefficient manner. So some of the things we'll talk about in the design will, will share how we're doing that. And then a cost effective design and incorporating program spaces. We'll talk about those as well. Next slide, please. So early on, we talked about, um, uh, what is jail design? And we talked about the idea of safe and secure, providing classification, providing areas within housing, special needs, medical, those types of spaces that create the ability for the sheriff in this community to provide different classifications. We talked about the importance of officer sightlines. We talked about what that means as it relates to not just within the housing area, but within the facility itself. As it relates to intake and release, we want to make sure that the design of that, and we'll talk a little bit more about it, is efficient. Um, that that process is efficient, both from the standpoint of law enforcement as well as from the standpoint of releasing individuals back into the community. Medical, um, it's very apparent, we wanted it to be close to booking, but also providing some separation from a standpoint of male and female. Next slide, please. So as it relates to intake, release and transfer, your facility will incorporate both a process to bring those in for booking. So we wanted to make that efficient, allowing the law enforcement to be able to come into a Sallyport, go through the processing component within the area, uh, uh, for the arrestee and then make that transfer from the arrestee to the booking area, so into the facility itself. We wanted to make sure that what process was efficient. We wanted to make sure that it was also efficient as it relates to release. How do we actually make sure that we're releasing those individuals in an efficient manner? So we've created that in this facility. And then from the standpoint of being able to have transfer. So currently this facility will allow for the transfer of in custody to court. That's going to happen, just like it does now. How do we make sure that we do that? How do we make sure that it's not just a space that we plug in, put individuals in, load them in a car and take them over here? There's actually a process that the sheriff wants to make sure he can do and handle so that it's safe and secure for both the in custody as well as for staff. And the ultimate goal for booking is just the overall process of how that works, but we also want to make sure we get an appropriate size. Next slide, please. As it relates to medical, something that, um, in your current facility, medical was an item that you had and then, and then it was kinda rearranged and morphed and then it was kinda into two spaces, uh, that were very cramped for staff. So we want to make sure that at the end of the day, that medical is adjacent to the booking, but also close to, um, to the housing area. So individuals can move efficiently up and down that space. We also wanted to make sure that at the end of the day, we created the right size for your facility and the ability for growth down the road. Because I think from a standpoint of medical, we're going to continue to see both mental health and, um, other individuals that may need to use this space as they come into the facility. So how do we incorporate those types of things? And we'll talk a little bit about that. We've also created negative airflow, which was a, a topic and, and a goal, uh, early on in the process in this area, in this, in the, in the medical area and also creating, uh, space for both male and female. Next slide, please. We talked about this, uh, two weeks ago. We talked about where we're going with the, uh, Public Development District. I just wonder, uh, reiterate to you that we have, uh, placed the, uh, woodland vacation into the city and that's in process. We've also submitted the Public Development District applic- application on February twenty-sixth. We submitted that and that's in process as well. And we hope to receive some city comments here in the next, uh, week or so. Uh, so we'll have a little bit better idea of kinda where we're at. We've also completed an initial development review team meeting with the city. So we actually sat down with about twenty individuals, a virtual meeting and, uh, met to discuss the project with their, uh, planning staff, uh, with their inspection staff, with their reviewer staff and with their codes folks, just to get them up to speed on what we're doing, bring them in line with the project that we've got. And then we'll continue to meet with them, uh, at periodic times. And I'll talk a little bit about that in the schedule. Next slide, please. So once we found out what the site was and the one that the county wanted to purchase, we spent some time as a team looking at that site. We spent time thinking about the overall orientation of the building. Part of what we're trying to accomplish here, uh, with this site and with the building is creating an efficient, uh, building, both from a footprint perspective as well as from an energy perspective. So we actually spent a lot of time looking at wind, sun, how do we capture enough sun to actually be able to, uh, turn off lights or dim lights and reduce the electricity within this facility? So the item on the right is the, is where we've landed at the end of the day. Do we know what that quantity of efficiency is? At this point, we don't. But I can tell you that based on the site orientation, we feel that we've created an area or created a, uh, uh, an actual orientation that's going to, to allow for some efficiencies within what we're trying to accomplish. It also is allowing us to, from a utility perspective, bring utilities to this site, um, in a, in a better manner than it would have, uh, the other way. Next slide, please. So in this, um, as we've oriented the building itself, one of the pieces that we talked about is how the public accesses this site and how the public comes and, and, uh, comes to the building itself. One of the other elements we talked about is providing, uh, site access at one location. You see, there are actually two locations that we have access to, a ring road to this building. But really the only access to this site from both a public staff and delivery, uh, point is on Pacific. So the road that you see there, uh, that we've attached to from Pacific brings everybody to this building. They come and are directed to the building itself. With the orientation of the building, now everybody can actually see the front door. So they know where to go. That's the other piece about this site is as you drive down the road, you gotta know where you're going. Where's the building, right? Which road do I need to make sure, which parking lot do I need to go to? So with the sighting of this building, it's allowed us to do that. This also with the sighting has allowed us to look at, um, future growth as it relates to housing, administration and then an overall county. This site actually has the ability for the county to, to add additional, um, housing, uh, there at the top. Uh, that'd be the top left of the image there where the housing is on the backside of the building. All of that space could be used for housing. Housing may be different in the next fifteen to twenty years. So that space actually can accommodate a lot of different opportunities or options that the county chooses to do as we look at what that housing may need to be. We also allocated space for additional administration. So as you add that housing, most likely going to have to add some administration space. And then the, uh, light green space off to the right-hand side of the access point there, that's a, uh, space that could be utilized by the county for a future building of some other kind. So the site has allowed us to be able to do those types of things. The other thing you see here as it relates to landscaping is we've provided trees and other, uh, low, we've provided also low lying type of, uh, buffers around the site. One is to buffer from the train, the traffic and the noise. And then the other is to buffer from the idea of other, um, uh, folks that may buy those properties there to the north or to the, uh, west of the site. So we've looked at those types of things to make sure that we're creating a buffer for the county. Not that we don't want people to see the building and be a part of the building, but we want to make sure that you as a county have a buffer from that perspective. We've also created secure gates to allow for only public to come to the public parking lot. Every other space to get to, whether it's delivery or whether it's around to the ring road or whether it's to the vestibule there at the bottom by the, uh, tracks, all are done by secure gate controlled by staff. And then wayfinding, uh, as we work through this project, we'll also find the right spaces to place the sign that says Shawnee or says Saline County Jail. Apologize for that. Uh, and then we'll also find the right space to be able to make sure we've got the public parking, uh, identified as well as staff parking. Apologize for that. Next slide, please. So this was the plan I showed you, uh, a couple of weeks ago when we talked about the Public Development District. Our team's been working diligently. We've got a ton of people, or not a ton, but we have a, quite a few folks working on this project. And be, and through that process from February twenty-sixth and beyond, we spent some time thinking about the project a little differently. We talked about square footage. We talked about a lot of things that we had to do. One of the pieces that we actually found, where the exercise areas were a little, little more spacious than were required by program, which was done, um, by Jim Robertson early on, as well as, as we look. as well as we looked at ACA, which is American Corrections Association, which identifies a square footage number based on the amount of in custody that may be used in that space. So, I show you this because, the next slide, please. We've actually made some modifications to the floor plan, and I wanted to make sure that you're aware of that, so that, again, that's something you'll see in your booklet. So, we did make some adjustments on the exercise area. And that doesn't change function to this building. That doesn't change how it's going to operate. It actually made the building better. And it actually allows us to think about those spaces a little differently. So, the spaces outside, we may talk about as a team, whether those can be outdoor spaces or not. So, those are some of the things we're still working through here through design development. One of the other pieces I want to talk about as we talk about housing is we've created these cells and holding areas as flexible spaces. And you look at me and go, "How does that happen?" We've created each one of these cells the same. That gives the sheriff the ability to move classifications around, or as different types of classifications grow, he's not limited to a certain area within the housing area to put individuals. So, as females, you've seen over the last 20 years growing in a population number, right? So, that number may continue to grow. Although, we've shown an area there on the top in the housing area to be pink, it may be that one of those housing areas, I hope this doesn't happen, but one of those housing areas may actually be all pink at some point if that population group continues to grow. So, it allows the sheriff to move those individuals around from a minimum standpoint, medium standpoint, and a max standpoint. So, those are the things we're able to do there. Each of our housing areas or each of our housing pods also include an ADA cell for each space as well. So, we talked a little bit before about intake, release, and transfer. As you can see, the layout there in the purple on the bottom right is both where the Sallyport is. The transfer component occurs in the blue. And then, booking is the large purple area. We've created a release space right behind the booking desk. That area actually allows for the in custody to come into that space, bonding agents to be able to come into that space, or significant other spouses or family members to bond people out. We've created the ability for a communication to happen right there from that booking desk to the release, so nobody from the sheriff's staff has to move around. We've also generated the, created the property area right there as well to transfer that property. So, we're trying to keep that space as efficient as possible. I can tell you that was one of the more difficult areas to design at the end of the day, because we had so many pieces that were trying to touch that one area. From the transfer perspective, we've created the space there in the blue that has for staff to be able to operate, move around, juxtaposition as they try to determine who's moving from where, and to be able to coordinate that movement from both the housing's component to the courthouse. But what we've also created here is actual double-doored holding spaces off of that yellow corridor space right adjacent to the blue. Those spaces can be utilized as a transfer holding. So, in custody can come from the housing, special needs, medical, and then come and they can actually be placed in one of those areas, wait for the proper vehicle to come, that they're going to be transferred to court. They transfer to court. They do what they need to do for the day, and then they're able to come back. So, all of that can be done right here in the secure component, because all of that then transfers right into the vehicular Sallyport. The other element here, just to the left of that, is special needs. So, the blue is for male. The pink is for female at this point. And then, medical is right there in the gray right next to it. All of those spaces are very tightly placed in an adjacency both to the housing area as well as to medical. That allows for staff to move from medical to housing very efficiently. With that being said, the other pieces I would like to highlight in this plan are the fact that we have incorporated some staff spaces. So, the staff areas are all beyond the yellow, bright yellow corridor space. So, everything up to the north on the right-hand side. All of that is staff space, from locker space to office space. We've created a fitness space, and we've also created a break area. One of the other elements that we talked about as a team through the last three months is, all of those are great. How do we handle our staff that we actually have that are working within the facility? And can we create spaces that actually work for them as well to be able to go and debrief, go and relax, take 15, 20 minutes to take a lunch break, whatever that may be? So, we've actually created, next to the special needs area, both on the female and the male side, we've actually created small breakout spaces. They have an open-to-the-outside space as well as a little break room space for each of the staff to go into. Those can be a multitude of staff, four to five people. But it gives that ability for staff to have space there as well. Something that, to be real frank, as I've done a lot of these types of facilities, we've not been able to incorporate. And I can tell you, your sheriff and their staff are very much in tune to making sure that we're doing the right things as it relates to staff and doing things that enhance what they can, what they find to the best of their abilities. The other piece that I want to share is the programs area. And that area is in the, has the large rectangular green square with the blue spaces around it. That's our programs area. The green space is the courtyard that we talked about early on when we were doing this project at the beginning. And then, all of those other spaces are program, from classroom-type spaces to office spaces to a large multipurpose space that can be arranged, organized in any fashion for any type of program that the sheriff or staff want to utilize. It allows for an outdoor space to bring both natural light in, but also to have a space where people can go to. We haven't designed the green space yet, so the next time I come back, maybe that's three months from now, we'll have a better idea of what that space is. But those are the types of things that we're able to do here. The only other element I want to share is the lobby space that's just to the right there in the tan color. That is the public lobby space. And the way we've arranged that space is we actually have three different elements that are touching that space that are important. One is sheriff's office and his staff, and how public can access him and his staff. And we've created a space for that where we actually have a media-type room and his administrative assistant that are right there off the public lobby. We've got a records area where most, all public individuals that come to this facility and have questions or thoughts or concerns or need to go somewhere or need to be navigated to a place, that's where they're going to go. And then, we also have a control, 24/7 control. And it's the, I think it's kind of an orange color. I'm not too good with that color. But anyway, it's the orange area right there on the bottom portion of the lobby space, right next to visitation. So, we've done those types of things to make sure that we got adequate space, but also security within the facility. Next slide, please. One of the other elements that we talked about early on was the overall idea of what the holding cells would be. So, we've actually done a study and looked at the layout for both the medical as well, or sorry, special needs as well as general housing. So, the general housing cells at this time are all precast cells, okay? And those are the ones on the left-hand side. The special needs are a masonry cell. At this point, based on just the economy of where we're trying to put those, how many we have, it made a heck of a lot of sense to do that. The other piece you'll notice in this is we do have a rear chase. And that's one of the things we did talk about early as well. But both have that ability to have that rear chase. So, everything from mechanical, electrical, and plumbing is all back-of-house and accessed outside the secure area. Next slide, please. So, we'll dive a little bit into the exterior of this building. These are some just inspirational images that we used throughout. There was a lot more, but these were the six that we really thought about as it related to what we're trying to get accomplished as a group. So, what you'll see there is a precast that's on the bottom left and the center of the bottom as well. So, we're talking about using a precast concrete on the outside of the building. The upper two images on the top right and the middle are a metal panel. Again, bringing that metal panel into the building itself on the exterior, an economical way to handle that. What those colors are, we haven't decided yet. But from a material standpoint, that makes a whole lot of sense. And then, that bottom right image of an acrylic glazing system that we've used in the past, again, an economical solution to bring, able to bring natural daylighting into a space, but then also creating a visual barrier both in and out. So, it's a good product to be able to use. Next slide, please. Here at the end of SCAMAG Design, one of the things we wanted to make sure is can we actually build what we're talking about? Can we take the products and the materials that we're talking about, and can we actually build it, right? That's the ultimate piece. You can do all kinds of fun, great things and put great pictures up there, but can it go together? And so, we've actually looked at that. And as you can see, from a secure standpoint, we've got masonry and the metal panel. We've got masonry and precast. In the office areas or staff areas that are outside the secure perimeter, we'd be talking about a metal stud and insulation and metal panel or precast. And all of those, as we've looked at that, meets the code requirements from the energy standpoint. That's the other element we wanted to touch on here as it relates to looking at these is, are we meeting what the energy code requires for this building today? Next slide, please. So, here are a handful of images. I think you've actually seen these. We might have fine-tuned them a tad bit more. I would tell you that anything in the beige color, tan color, is a precast item. Anything in that gray tone is a metal panel. And then, the darker tone is just a shadow line that you see there that we're showing the shadow that we were able to get with some of the roof monitors and roof overhangs that we have. The top, there it says the northeast elevation, that is the front entry and lobby space as you come to the building. Staff is off to the right of that, and then booking, and the Sallyport is off to the left. The image on the bottom is of the service area, but also you can see the housing there to the right and the clear stories and monitors that we're using as it relates to over the medical and special needs area there at the center, and then also clear story lighting into the housing areas. Next slide, please. This is the image showing the housing area with the reduction, or sorry, not the reduction, but revisions to the exercise area and rec yards. Again, getting that natural daylighting in with clear glass, but also using that acrylic product to be able to look at it from a standpoint and getting natural daylighting into those spaces. And then, on the lower portion there, that's the medical and special needs area with the LEC off, or sorry, the booking area off to the right and housing off to the left. So, with that, our team then spent some time making sure that we could actually provide a visual that made a whole lot of sense as it relates to the aesthetics of this building. Next slide, please. This is an image of the front door of your building as you approach the site itself. So, you're seeing the staff parking there in front within the public lobby there and the public entry there directly in the middle. Staff is off to the right, and then booking off to the left. I will tell you, there's some things in this that will most likely change over the next few months. And I share that because we've done a lot of these things together as a group, and we've had some discussions, and we've kind of said, "Here's kind of where we want to be as stakeholders and as a design team." But I will also tell you that, as I've talked with the sheriff, there are some things that we need to circle back and make sure we're addressing. And one is, in this staff parking area, how do we do things to accommodate some sense of, and I don't want to call it security, but a sense of not allowing people to just walk into that space? So, we've got to spend some time on that, on our team's side, and come back with some options there to circle back with the client on that or with the sheriff on that. Next slide, please. This is a bird's-eye view of that same area. As you can see, we have the secure gates into the staff parking area. Those would be card red, so that anybody from a staff perspective that wants to park in that area has to have a card. Public are not able to park in there. We've also created space right into the, right to the left of the public entry space for staff to be able to inspect vehicles. So, we've brought that to the front of the building a tad bit with an overhang. So, that allows for those vehicles to come there. Now, that doesn't mean you can bring your 18-wheeler, your tractor, or those types of items. So, we had to, we've accommodated that in another location. But if you bring your truck or your car, you can come here and at least have that accomplished here. Next slide, please. So, I want to talk a little bit about schedule. As I said, we're done with SCAMAG Design today. That's the top bar there on the design end. We will begin design development today. Actually, most of our teams probably already gotten started on that. And we're going to wrap that up here in the next three to four months. So, we'll be back with a presentation at that point. And then, after we wrap up design development, we'll go through construction documents and complete all documents for pricing and for building of this project. In conjunction with the design schedule, we've got a couple others that we want to talk a little bit about. And I'm going to have Dave come and talk a little bit about the construction schedule. And as he's coming up here, I'll share on the city side what we're doing there. You can see that we've already submitted for the vacation. We've already submitted for the PDD. The idea is, based on when we submitted, that the first part of May, we should have approval on the PDD with the city. But throughout the process of design, and we will continue to meet with the city development for review of the project, so that we bring them along, not just us saying, "Here, tada, here's the project, give us a permit," but actually bring them along. So, if there are any comments or questions that they have, then we'll get those up front and be able to address those before we go for a final permit review that we've got there at the bottom. Dave, you want to talk a little bit about construction schedule?
Thanks, Jeff. Morning, commissioners. Dave Dudzik, Turner Construction. Remind you that this delivery method for construction is a construction manager-at-risk delivery method. And we really feel that this project can benefit from a two phases of construction contract approval. First one being, in coordination with where the progress of the plans are at, is in the third quarter of this year, we'll allow contract approvals so that we can begin work fourth quarter of this year to take advantage of weather, to do site work, site utilities, those types of things. Because we all know Slyna is 70 and sunny every day, except January through February. So, we're trying to do work that will not, weather would not impact. And then, phase two of construction approval would be in that fourth quarter, again, coordinating with the completion of the construction documents. And then, continuing with construction of the structure of the building and all the other components to complete the project in the third quarter of 2023. So, I think that completes our, Jeff's presentation. He brought me along just for the fun of it. So, I think we want to open it up for questions at this point, right, Jeff?
Yeah. Well, is there any comments or questions by the commissioners?
Mr. Commissioner Vidrickson, and I will just say that having been on the design committee, if you will, or the jail committee, I've been privileged to a lot of this information. And now that it's coming to fruition from the pictures and design and so forth, I'm really excited about it. It certainly has my approval, and I hope the others come along also. It's a great design, and I'm excited for it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Vidrickson. Any other commissioner comments?
Mr. Chairman, we do have a hand raised.
Okay. Any members of the public at this time could speak? Your name and address, please.
Lanay Myers, Slyna, Kansas. I just want to say again that, first of all, I think the commissioners chose the right team, the trainer team. I'm really impressed with Jeff's knowledge. And I've always had a sense that for him and his team, this project is more than just a money-making business. I just sense that they have some compassion and concern for people who have legal, criminal issues. So, I'm really impressed with what's happening, and I hope to stay tuned. And I'm really, really liking to hear about the green space, because I really think getting some sunlight and helping them get involved in green spaces is... is a very, very, very healthy thing to do. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Laney. Any other hands up? Any other Commissioner comments? At this time, I'll bring it back to the Commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the schematic design of the new jail and sheriff's office as presented.
Second to motion. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 135-21 schematic design for new jail and sheriff's office. Any further comments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you all. Great presentation and we'll look forward to looking through this a little more in depth. And that's the end of action items. I'd like to take a five minute break right quick and we'll be right back for the deal at this time. Okay, thank you. Are you ready for this from Mr. Phil?
Ready as I'll ever be.
Okay, we'll be back in session now. So it's like, anyway, next item?
Vehicle leasing with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning again, Phil.
Good morning again, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. So, you know, one of the things that the Commission expects out of me and my office is to sort of keep our eyes on things around the county that could be improved a little bit. And so one of the things that I observed when I first came here a little over a year ago was our vehicle process. And kind of had that on my list of things to look at someday. And then, you know, COVID happened and did not rise to the top of the list. But last summer got approached by a vendor. And that often happens in, in these roles where vendors, you know, want a little bit of your time to talk about their latest and greatest idea. And so I try and take those meetings oftentimes because there's always interesting things that you learn out of those. So this particular one happened to be with a vehicle leasing company and started a conversation which eventually involved a lot of our department heads about whether leasing could be a way to optimize the way that we were spending county resources on vehicles. And that ultimately ended up culminating with bringing a potential lease agreement in front of the county commission last December. And the commission did not rubber stamp that. You all had questions, which is your role in the process. And I think you played it admirably in this particular situation. Ultimately, after a couple of meetings, said, okay, we would like to look at other options. Give us a more global view of what leasing options may be out there. And so in January, staff released a request for information and we mailed it out to a bunch of different firms, both locally and nationally, and said, okay, what kinds of leasing programs can you offer to the county? And so the result of that is a big old table that you all have included in your packets, which is answers to 16 questions that we posed from six different firms. We got three responses from firms who do this nationally and three responses from firms that are associated with local vehicle dealerships here in Salina. And so that's a really good mix. It's very interesting. Had some really great discussions, particularly with a couple of our local dealers and their thoughts on the matter. So here we are. And just wanted to get back with the Commission, talk about the results of what we found and talk about where we go from here. You know, I suspect that we probably won't end up with the lease agreement that was presented to you in December. And I think that's a good thing. I think that ultimately, having had some more time to look at this and think about different options, I think, you know, we've, we've kind of stumbled our way through this a little bit, but ultimately I think ended up with a better suite of options than, than what we had just based on one particular proposal. And so there have been some questions that really have surfaced as a result of this process. One being, how do we better accommodate all the needs of county staff for vehicle usage? Currently, we have some departments that have a lot of county-owned vehicles and others that spend a lot of money on reimbursing mileage for county use of employee-owned vehicles. Would expansion of the fleet be a better option than continuing to pay for that mileage reimbursement? And then how do we afford to expand the fleet and to maintain it long-term? Another series of questions is the long-term impacts of leasing, particularly if the market for used vehicles changed substantially. What risks would the county be assuming by moving toward more of a lease structure? And then, you know, sort of one of the attractive features of a lease is that it smoothes out the annual investment in, in our vehicle replacement and maintenance costs. Are there other ways to smooth out that annual investment and allow for better long-term decision-making as funding availability changes? And I think there are. And then how can the county minimize the time and effort that's required for the vehicle acquisition and delivery process, particularly as it involves upfitting some newly acquired vehicles with specialized equipment? And that's, of course, most dramatic in the sheriff's office where there's a lot of upfitting for patrol vehicles and we've experienced some significant lag times with that. So like I said, lots of questions that have arisen. A few options that we might look at to try and tackle some of those questions. We could try out a leasing program and see whether that solved some of those issues. There are, you know, as I said, a suite of different leasing options that we've been presented with. We could also, you know, possibly engage somebody to do an analysis of our fleet and come up with some recommendations. And, you know, I've talked to some folks about how much, you know, what the time and money involved in that would be. Or of course, you know, we could, you could ask staff to perform some additional work, research, talk about what other comparably sized local governments are doing, methodologies for improvements. I have to say, that's probably the option that would take the longest amount of time just in view of, of other projects. But again, this was something that, you know, there was no urgency to it when it came about. The only reason that we really brought this to the Commission when we did was the model year-end for the various manufacturers. As it turns out, that probably would not have mattered a great deal anyway because the major manufacturers have had some difficulties getting semiconductors this year as a result of everything going on in the world economy and so have been unable to deliver some vehicles anyway. So that's kind of where we are. And I'd be happy to answer some questions, receive some further direction from the Commission. I know there are a couple of folks in the audience who are here as well that may have some, some knowledge to offer, so happy to answer questions.
This is Commissioner Vidrickson and I've had phone calls from three separate local car dealers, two of them of which have never sold the county a vehicle. And so that wasn't their, you know, in their interest to, to, to make a comment other than the fact from a taxpayer's viewpoint. And they unanimously said that leasing vehicles, based on how the county uses vehicles, drives vehicles, the types of vehicles that we use, that it would not be in the county's best interest to go into a leasing program. There, there's just no way it would, would benefit the county. The people who sell vehicles to the county or any municipality normally don't hardly make a dollar, if they make a dollar on, on a new vehicle purchase. You know, they do it for the good of the county. They do it for the good of the city, you know, to get their vehicles in front of people and so forth. Civic responsibilities. A lease program, there is going to be a built-in profit on the front end of that lease right off the bat. So we're going to be paying that extra money. I'm not, I wasn't in favor of it three months ago and I'm not in favor of it now. Now, that having been said, I am in favor of, of getting vehicles for a couple of the departments that we currently pay mileage to. I think that would be beneficial to the county and those individuals that are driving their personal vehicles. I think we should really look real hard at doing that. But as far as the leasing program itself on the surface, I was, like I said, 90 days ago, I was against it and I'm against it now.
Yeah, I agree, Commissioner Vidrickson, that with what you said, in the way that you said it, which is, if the county continues to do vehicle usage the way it's always done vehicle usage, then leasing does not make sense. The program that was previously presented was based on a wholesale change in thinking about the way the county has traditionally used vehicles. The county has traditionally tried to wring every last mile out of a vehicle. And in that instance, yeah, leasing, it certainly does not make sense. But if the county were to move to a different model of what we expected out of our vehicles, it could potentially make sense. But I'm certainly not, you know, I'm certainly not pushing leasing as an option. I just wanted to make that clarification. I do agree that if the intent of the commission is to continue to make sure that we drive them until they don't have any value left, then yes, I would not recommend leasing.
Okay. Do we have any other commissioners that would like to speak?
I might be a little early with this question, but we do have a couple of departments that we pay per diem, or mileage, for car usage of their own. I'm having a hard time. I mean, to me, that almost seems like a lease program. You're paying them money for the use of their car. Now, if we could put them in a vehicle and do it cheaper than what we're having to do per diem, without having to own that vehicle and have all the bidding and all that that goes with that, in my mind, there might be, might be, until I get into this further and see more numbers, that it's possible it could be less expensive for the county to lease a vehicle to put them in versus paying them mileage for that. It just depends on the numbers and what the mileage is and all of that.
Yeah, I think what we found out when we looked at the program previously is, it's really the initial cost that's the barrier, right? When you're paying somebody 56 cents or 58 cents a mile, that sort of comes out in dribs and drabs. But when you're talking about acquiring five new vehicles to offset that cost, that's a big upfront investment, whether it's on a purchase or a leasing type of a program. So, for example, when we considered the options back in December, one of the strategies was using the savings from the sheriff's office, the number of vehicles that were currently in the budget for the SO, to offset the initial cost of acquiring vehicles for the appraiser's office. If we don't have a mechanism for saving in one place, then anything that we're going to invest in another place is money that we would have to come up with some other way. Now, certainly, we could look at different leasing options and see, because, you know, we only looked at really one option at the time, so we could look at other options. But most of the time, though, with a lease, there is an initial capital investment of, you know, either a trade-in or a down payment of some kind. So, yeah, I see, you know, I'm hearing at least two commissioners saying that we should get, sort of hone in on those departments where we're paying a lot of mileage, and we can certainly look at that and see. But I would just say, as an initial reaction, it's going to be, it's a really hard transition, because you don't, you can't just stop paying the mileage until you get the new vehicle and, you know, like that dollar amount is there for a particular purpose, and you have to have an infusion of cash from somewhere else to sort of get over that hump.
Okay. And we'll come back, but I just want to, we have some people out here for the public to speak on this, and you guys can come on up to the podium and state your name and address.
I'm Larry Marshall, Marshall Motor Company. And I think you all need to understand what leasing really is. The cost of owning a vehicle is made up of two things primarily. One's depreciation, one is money cost, and/or the cost of the capital. On an open-end lease, you're going to have the same depreciation cost, whether you buy it or you own it. The cost of capital at this particular point, you have the ability to tax the populace, so you really don't have a capital cost. If you're leasing, whether it's from Enterprise, or Marshall Motor Company, or Law MacArthur, or whoever, they have capital cost. Your fleet, as I looked at what you had, you probably have $4 million tied up in vehicles. Any leasing company will need to make money on that $4 million, and/or they're going to pay interest on that $4 million at 5%. That's $200,000 a year that you're going to add to the cost of what it costs to do vehicles. Right now, you have two dealers in Salina that compete on almost every vehicle that you have, or that you want, and they were very competitive. And I'll just speak for me, but I don't remember a time in the last 20 years that we've made a dime on selling cars or vehicles to the county, regardless of what it's for. We like to have the vehicles out on the street, and it's just good PR for us to do that. As an automobile dealer, I'd love to have you lease, because if you lease, and I have the contract, I'll make some money off the county for the first time. As a taxpayer, it's absolutely the wrong thing to do, in my opinion, in terms of saving taxpayer money when it's done. I think, should you decide to lease, if that's the decision, it's done, that leasing should stay within the automobile dealers in Salina and not from out of town. Between the five that are left, and when I started, there were 13. Now there's five, but of the five that are left, we're paying, probably close, plus or minus a little, $600,000 a year in property taxes to the county and to the city. And it would be a travesty, in my opinion, to take that money outside to Enterprise or to anybody else. I've leased, well, I started 58 years ago, and my first job was leasing. We did everything manually, by hand. There's a time and a place to lease, but I don't think it's the right time or the right place for the county to lease. Okay? The right time to lease is if you want to rotate vehicles every three, four, or five years, drive them low miles, and have off-balance sheet financing. And most of the commercial leasing that's done is done, companies that prefer to have their vehicles off their balance sheet. Now, any questions, anybody has, I'd be delighted to try to answer.
Any questions by any commissioners? For Mr. Marshall?
Yeah.
Seena.
And I'm absolutely confident, the cost of vehicles for the county will be significantly higher if you lease as compared to purchase. After seeing all of the vehicles that you have, you have a significant fleet, I'd certainly encourage that you look at hiring a fleet manager for the county to oversee and coordinate what you need between all the different entities.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Thank you. Very interesting. And we have another client back here? We have another, somebody else back here wants to speak? Okay.
I'm Bill Rogge with Law MacArthur Ford, and I've been not around as long as Larry's been, but been with Law MacArthur over 25 years. Been handling the feet, the county and city business for about 15, 20 years. And I will coincide with Phil and Vidrickson and Larry, whenever we bid vehicles, we don't plan on making an opinion. Typically, by the time we get done with everything, we're in the hole just to keep the money And we appreciate the business that the county has given us. We do the same for the city. We like to see our vehicles running around, if it's a Dodge, or a Ford, or whatever it might be. It's good for the taxpayers to see that, because they know their money is hard at work for the locals. As far as leasing, there are several different avenues of leasing. There is the commercial side or governmental side, there is the normal consumer side. When I filled the questionnaire out for the county and Phil, we have a director, a regional director that works with Ford, who we can get a hold of Phil, who will present them with some options or ideas of what, how the Ford program works. When we price vehicles for county and municipality, Ford Motor Company gives them a much bigger discount than anything the public will ever see. To give you an example, I just, we just placed a bid for the county on truck, and I think Holmes and I were the ones to bid on it, and that truck actually had a $9,000 discount that was included in that bid pricing. So that's something that the private citizen will never see, because Ford Motor Company writes it off to give them the benefit too. The typical commercial lease or governmental lease basically works in a way that it is structured with the municipality, where at the end of the lease, they buy it for a dollar. Then they can do what they can do with what they want. They can sell it, if it's in good shape, then get more of the money back out. As Phil would say, as Phil was saying, leasing just spreads your overall cost over a period of years, instead of having to lay out $50,000 for one of the vehicles to deliver next month. The other idea, the other form of leasing is a monthly lease, and that is normally for the consumer. But as you gentlemen were talking, that some of your departments are paying mileage to the private people when they use their vehicles. One idea there might be to explore the option, if it were possible, to do like a three-year lease, where it's set up on a monthly payment, where if the health department or appraiser department needs two vehicles, they have two vehicles leased, and then when the lease is up at the end, they return them back in if they're in their mileage restraints. And we set that up as a low-mileage lease, or a 15,000 mile lease, or whatever, how that's structured. That is known as a closed-end lease, where at the end of that period, your vehicle is worth a set amount of dollars. If you haven't gone over your mileage, if it's a normal condition, the county or the person doing it would owe no extra dollars, as long as the payments are made. The other type of lease would be the open-end lease, where I do some of those with the commercial people in town, where it's a variety of, it's, well, you're guessing what value it is. Don't know, but they're usually trucks and stuff like that. Those are the two types of leases. And in some areas, I could see where it might work. Some areas, it would not work on the county trucks, utility trucks, and that type, unless you did the 1% at the end. I would be glad to get the regional Ford rep in contact with Phil, whoever type deal, to explore those options. But I would also coincide with Larry, I would like to see the county money kept in the county, instead of going outside. Anybody pursue outside, Enterprise, Wheels, I deal with all, and deliveries, they're in for profit, local dealerships or not. They're in just to service the community. And I'd be glad to answer any questions or anything else.
Very valuable information from both of you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I have a Phil question. Is Salina County trying to reinvent the wheel? I mean...
No, they're just not trying to reinvent the wheel. I think they're trying to best spend their dollars. In some areas, you can, like in investigator cars, where you don't put many miles on them, and then you'd appreciate it faster than they would the miles. Appraisers' vehicles, different stuff where you're not using, maybe they're sitting there four days a week, and they use one day a week.
Yes.
But where the county trucks are always on the road, five days a week, hitting the dirt roads and stuff, yeah, you're better off running them until you get the last penny out of them.
You bet.
But it's well worth looking at your options to do that, to maximize your dollars. And I appreciate, I commend Phil to looking at that options.
You bet.
There are some places that do that, so...
Thank you. Back to my administrator question is...
Yeah, no, I appreciate that answer, because that's similar to what I would have said. No, I would say that we are trying to make sure that we're optimizing the expenditure of our resources, remembering that they all come from the taxpayers. I'm really intrigued, when Mr. Marshall and I sat down and had a conversation, and he mentioned the idea of a fleet manager, and I thought, well, duh. You know, I've worked in other jurisdictions, and that's what they do. When you have a fleet of 100-plus vehicles, you know, generally, that's a valuable resource that takes somebody with some dedicated time and effort. I mean, if you think, and I haven't run the numbers, but assuming Mr. Marshall's number of 4 million is correct, I mean, if you think about that, we have departments that spend less than $4 million a year. And so that's a significant resource that we have just sort of had folks over time, you know, that's kind of a, oh, yeah, you're in charge of, you know, a jail and patrol staff, and by the way, you need to be an expert at vehicles on the side, right? And so, you know, having somebody who devoted some time and... who devoted some time and energy to this, that was an intriguing suggestion. On the other hand, that is also an expensive suggestion. Our next item on today's agenda is going to be our financial projection to start talking about the 2022 budget. So mindful of the fact that there are trade-offs when you start talking about better managing resources. So now, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel, but definitely trying to make sure that we're spending as little on the wheel as we can get away with.
Appreciate that. And I guess specifically, is we have access to resource people? We have KAC and our National Association of Counties. Can they supply some of this information and the pluses and the minuses on lease versus purchasing or whatever?
Yeah, I mean, KAC, I'm not aware of them ever having tackled vehicle purchasing. NACO could be a resource. As I mentioned, I mean, I think one of the potential paths forward is to look at what other comparably sized jurisdictions are doing and why they're doing what they're doing. In my very brief conversation with, you know, somebody who consults in this area, mentioned internal service funds, which is not something that we do in Celine County, but is something that I have done in other jurisdictions to pay for services like vehicles. And so, you know, I think there's plenty of room to improve the process and plenty of time to make that happen.
Well, I want to thank the administration for looking. I mean, no matter what it is, whether it's vehicles or employees or whatever, ways that we can give the most bang for the buck to the citizens of Celine County. I appreciate, it never hurts to look. It never hurts to continue to research and look for bigger and better ways. I think there are some entities out there that are using leasing. It would be interesting to hear their rationale of why did you do this? And if you have a 10-year track record, can you show us, you know, that it was the best for your community and why it was the best? I appreciate Mr. Marshall's remarks. I had the opportunity to visit with him earlier in the week. And he does bring a lot of years of expertise. And he has been very honest and forthright in what he's brought to us. So I'm sure there's merit in that too. But I'm not saying cast this away and we're done with it. I would appreciate, but I don't know how much time staff has to allot to this one project. But it would be interesting to get just a little bit more information, just to have knowledge.
Well, certainly, I think that's, you know, as I think about, you know, where we go from here, some comparative information, I mean, that shouldn't be all that hard to pull together, depending on how wide we cast that net. I mean, we could also, as we look at the budget process, we could also look at what it would cost specifically for the departments. And there are three that I think that I would focus on initially. The appraiser, health, and planning would be the ones that sort of have the biggest line items for mileage reimbursement. Could look at what it would cost, those three departments in particular, and, you know, bring that as a budget alternate and have further discussion in that way.
Good. Any other comments? And I just want to thank you for spending all the time since December on this to get with all the vendors and put this together. So it's, and thank you all for coming and sharing your stories. Thank you. And if that's all, we'll just move to the next item.
Financial projection with Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
And I'm going to relocate real quick.
Okay, Phil.
So, good morning again, commissioners. So as we start talking about the budget process for 2022, I think it's always good to ground our discussions in some perspective about where we are and where we could possibly go over the next few years. So this year, I have prepared a five-year projection for each of the seven county funds that is supported in significant part by property tax levy. And I'll give credit to where credit is due. I borrowed this from a colleague and just changed all the numbers to Celine County numbers. But Cheryl Dillingham is the originator of this spreadsheet. So appreciate her work on that. So there are several things that I want to just note for the commission. First off, the financial projection is not a budget. When you see the budget, it's not going to have these numbers in it. For starters, Kansas budget law requires that we basically account for all of our excess cash in each fund and essentially budget to zero. So one of the major variances that you'll note in this projection, between the adopted budget for 2021 and the estimated actual, is the budget stabilization account, which we always include in the budget, but never hope to actually spend. And so that accounts for a big chunk of that variance. The financial projection is really used to illustrate the impacts of budget choices. And the other thing to keep in mind is that it's based on assumptions which will most likely be wrong. Just as an example, David Flaherty with Noxious Weed, I sent this out to a number of the department heads to look at. And David responded and said, well, you know, in your Noxious Weed assumption, you have said that you have a 3.5% inflator for the cost of chemicals. And for 2022, it's probably going to be higher than that because the storms in Texas affected a lot of the refineries. And, you know, petrochemicals are a base ingredient in a lot of the Noxious Weed chemicals. And so, you know, we're monitoring that. We don't have an exact number, but it's probably going to be higher in 3.5%. And said, yes, thank you, David, and I'm not going to change that number. And why am I not going to change that number? Because maybe over five years, it averages to 3.5%. You know, we've had better years than this and worse years than this. And so if you look at some of the assumptions, you know, it's based on really five years of history. And the average of those five years of history, not specific years. But, you know, good things happen as well as bad things, right? So for example, we have had in 2020, we certainly had less revenues from things like rentals. But we also had fewer expenditures in many areas. And then we had federal stimulus payments. And it looks like, depending on what happens in the US House of Representatives today or tomorrow, there may be another federal stimulus headed our way in 2021. So any assumptions that we make, again, are likely to not be correct in any given year. We do our best guess of what we think the trends will be like over a five-year period. So all that, again, is to say, this column here is not what you're going to see when I bring you a 2022 budget proposal. So let's talk a little bit about some of the things that have been embedded into this. One of the key drivers of our revenues in all seven of these funds is property taxes. That's why these seven funds were picked, because these are the ones that have a property tax mill levy. The assumption on all of these spreadsheets is that the increase in property taxes will be zero over the five-year period. Why did I pick zero? Well, I picked zero because Senate Bill 13, which is working its way through the legislature right now, will require you to issue a notice and conduct a specific public hearing for any increase in property tax. Dollar increase, not mill levy increase, right? So in fact, the property valuation notices that just went out, My Home increased, I don't know about everybody else's, but I think the average was, from talking to the appraiser, the average was around a 5% increase throughout the county. So we could actually have a 5% increase in property taxes and keep everybody's mill levy the same. That's ultimately a decision for the five of you. What do you want to set as your property tax policy for the next number of years? But I'll just illustrate how that can change the picture. So you can see right now, we have this big negative $12.8 million number here five years from now, based on these assumptions. Let's say we plug in a property tax growth rate of 2% per year over that five-year period. That won't completely solve the problem, but it will take that $12.8 million number down to a $9.5 million number. You could play around with different assumptions of, you know, how high you wanted to raise the mill levy and get different results. The other thing is sales tax. So I'm estimating that the sales tax will bring in about $4.7 million this year and then have inflated it by 1.1% for the next five years. Well, why was 1.1% picked? Well, that's because that's the average amount that it has grown over the last five years, okay? Why was $4.7 million picked when our budget is only 3.75? Well, our budget is only 3.75 because, remember, our budget was prepared last year at the very beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, when revenue uncertainty was at its highest. And so we wanted to be very, very conservative. In reality, in 2020, we ended up with over $4.9 million in sales tax revenues. So if I change the 4.7 to 4.9, assuming I have the right number of zeros there, and continue to inflate it by 1.1%, okay, that adds over another million to the bottom line over a five-year period. That works not only on the revenue side, but on the expenditure side as well, right? So we've assumed that salaries are going to increase by 2.9% each year. Why did I assume 2.9? Well, that's the average increase over the last five years. That's not that we have given people a 2.9% cost of living. It's, that's inclusive of the cost of living increase, step increases for those folks who are on the pay plan, and the addition of new positions over that time. But in this scenario, I've assumed not only a 2.9% increase, but also 15 new positions in the jail correction staff for each of the first three years, with the idea of being, getting us up to 45 new positions by the time the jail is ready to open. If we grow more slowly than that, that also changes that picture. Similarly, appropriations, I've assumed that those stay flat over the five-year period. Is that realistic? Well, it may be entirely possible that some of those folks need additional money or come to the county for additional money over that period of time. And again, that's a policy decision for the commission. So I just wanted to illustrate this to the commission. And we can walk through, I'd be happy to answer questions. We could walk through any of the funds, talk about the assumptions. But I know it's been a long morning already. So the real point of this is that I just wanted the commission to look at it and be able to think about it for a week because next Tuesday, I'm going to be back here asking you for direction as we roll out the 2022 budget process and start talking to departments about what you want to see from their proposals for 2022. So with that, I think I will stop talking and let the commissioners ask me some questions.
A lot of money. A lot of money.
I wish we had our state representative back in here now because I have some questions for him that I will pose to him later. But I appreciate it. It really gives you a glance forward of what happens under different scenarios. And I appreciate that workup.
This is a new avenue that we've been, never seen, to see this projection out, you know. Wow. Very interesting. Any other comments?
Is there anything that I could do to make this a little more helpful, a little more engaging for the commission? Particularly as we look ahead toward next week?
Well, you have the capability, you showed us that if we what-if this, you can change these things. And we have the ability to what-if this or what-if that. you, you can change these things. And, and, and we have the ability to, of what-if this or what-if that and, and see how that works on this.
Yes.
So.
And I'd be happy to send you the Excel file if you'd like to play around with it yourself. Or you can stop by my office anytime and we can play around with it to our heart's content.
Have you stopped by and you could play with it.
This is Commissioner Shadwick and your presentation makes sense to me.
All right. Okay.
All right. Well, thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Phil. Any commissioner comments? Well, seeing none, is there any announcements to be made? I just want to.
Commissioner, sir, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, I do have a question that's been brought up to me. And um, I know Phil answered it uh, to me yesterday, but um, and it deals with time limits on bars and they have to close and whether that was part of the health order or was that part of what we voted on as a county? I know that there will be St. Patrick's Day is coming up and some places will participate in that event. And um, where are we right now? Or can you just remind everybody where we are right now in, in, when they have to close?
Um, certainly through the chair. Um, so the, there are two different uh, things regarding the coronavirus pandemic that are um, rules. And I think people get sort of confused between them. So the first is the requirement for mask wearing. And that is an ordinance of the city of Salina and a resolution of the Saline County Commission. And those were adopted with basically the same language. So that those rules uh, apply across the community. And yesterday, the Centers for Disease Control issued some new guidance regarding mask wearing for people who are uh, two weeks past their second shot of the COVID vaccine. And so so there may be opportunity to revise those um, mask rules. The other uh, set of rules that we're operating under is the public health order um, that is issued by the health officer, but can be reviewed by your commission pursuant to House Bill 2016. And um, you will recall that uh, starting in November, we had a health order in this community that limited gatherings to 15 persons. And made some exceptions for uh, religious ceremonies, uh, retail stores, uh, large concert venues, et cetera. And also limited the hours of, of bars and restaurants. Uh, originally that was proposed at 11:00 PM. Uh, but your commission reviewed the original health order and revised that to midnight. Uh, last month, uh, the health officer, Jason Tiller, revised the health order again to loosen it up a little bit. So the number of folks for a mass gathering went from 15 persons up to 50 persons. And the gathering limits in, in certain um, high-capacity venues went from 25% of fire-rated capacity up to 50% of fire-rated capacity. The hour limitation on bars and restaurants did not change from what your uh, commission set back in November. So it is currently still at midnight. Um, but that health order is set to expire on the 22nd of this month. Uh, Jason will be back uh, in front of you next Tuesday for his uh, regular update. He's also appearing Monday night with the Salina City Commission as well. So Monday's the 15th, Tuesday's the 16th, next Wednesday will be St. Patty's Day. So um, if, if the commission wishes to make any changes, um, that, that would be the, the time to do it.
Okay. Thank you, Marty. That was a great question. Thank you, Phil, for that answer. Any, anything else in front of us? I just want to say is like, uh, going to the Equafest that was this last weekend, it was a, uh, to me, it was just great to see a lot of people out. The vendors there from all over the country. I know there was a little bit of a conflict with a lot of vendors from different parts of the state, different parts of the country that had no mask ordinances at all. Uh, and people not adhering to the mask deal. So it'll be interesting to see. I hope everything works out well for the Equafest because it was a great show. They had some great, great horse venues going on. It was, it was super. So, and thank all the people that did attend it. And uh, the Saline County does appreciate all the business that was generated by it also. Any other announcements? Seeing none, uh, no further business. Uh, Saline County Board of Commissioners is adjourned. Thank you.